Okay, I am going to bring up a presentation, just give me one second. My name is Lisa Gallo, I'm with the City of El Paso in the real estate department. I've been working on the lost dog conservation easement with many other people that are on the line today and also fellow city staff. We're here to have some public input as we finalize the final leg of drafting for the conservation easement. So we just have a very brief presentation and a couple of words and then we'll get to the public input. Can everyone see my screen and hear me okay? So just to go through the few things that we're going to go over today, we're going to have a little bit of opening remarks from District One where Lost Dog is located. We're going to go over the background of the conservation easement process if some of you are new to the process. We have the Lost Dog Trail Ordinance which was passed earlier last year, last week. We have some definitions that are kind of guiding us as we're moving through the easement process and then we're going to have a couple items for public input. And then we have the remaining steps to complete the conservation easement. And I apologize, we were not able to put up a survey link, but we are going to be allowing the kind of response in the commentary and chat panel tonight and then also you'll be able to voice any opinions also at the bottom of the Teams bar where you see your video camera and your mute button. There's a little hand that you can raise and Tammy will be doing some of the moderating and calling on as many of you as possible. So I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Pro-Tam and let him make some opening remarks about the Lost Dog Conservation.
Thank you Lisa and welcome to everybody who is out there in this virtual space for this town hall on a very important project. Again, I'd like to welcome you all to the first of two virtual public meetings we're having for this area, for the Lost Dog Trail area, and I hope you all are doing well. Again, this meeting was coordinated with the hard work of city staff who will be leading today's discussion. I would like to recognize their efforts as they continue to finalize this conservation easement and craft an easement that for this land that can be used by all to enjoy and appreciate. For those that don't know me very well, I'm an avid champion for open space. I enjoy personally a lot of our trails. I've traveled mountain biking once, but not yet comfortable with it, but I do enjoy going almost daily on our trails that are in our beautiful Franklin Mountains in the area around them. And I know that this project means a lot to you guys that are out there who have worked so hard and I'm hoping that we were able to chime in and listen to this presentation. Again, when voters voted overwhelmingly on May 4th of 2019 to save this land to be enjoyed for recreational and scenic purposes for generations of El Passos now in the future, I knew it was important to go above and beyond and to get a conservation easement placed on this land. I introduced that item along with Representative Morgan in July of 2019 and in February 18th of 2020, council voted to move forward overwhelmingly to get a conservation easement placed. I'm very happy that we are coming here together virtually for a meeting to gather input from the public. As a community, we have certainly come a long way from overwhelmingly voting to preserve this land to getting to the point we are now. And we are very, very close to having this process finalized and getting a conservation easement done on a very important project for me personally and for our community. I would think that we should view today as a sign of a positive movement towards that ultimate goal. But we need to focus on once and for all, looking at the details, crafting it for what an easement can look like. We cannot take the words lightly that made this happen and this discussion today is about making sure that the input there is received once and for all and the listening to what is being presented. So again, I just want to ask that staff has a short presentation possible. We'll have plenty of time after the presentation for any comments, concerns, you can use the chat box, you can also speak out, but we're going to ask you politely just to wait till the after the presentation by Lisa. And again, I want to thank you all for being here. This is the first of two meetings, we're going to have another one on September 30th. Really appreciate those who have reached out to our office asking for these stakeholder meetings and input from the public to happen. And so again, without further ado, I'd like to hand the floor off to staff so that we can do one step closer towards getting this easement done in a very, very efficient manner. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I will go through these slides very quickly and if you have specific questions, you can put them in the chat and we can address them after. I just want to give you guys some background and context again for some of you who aren't familiar with the entire process that we've had to date. So here we go. The Lost Dog Trail on May 4th, 2019, you, the El Paso voters, passed the ballot measure to preserve in perpetuity in its natural state approximately 1,000 acres of land on the northwest El Paso and that includes the Lost Dog Trail. And then on July 23rd, 2019, the council directed staff to explore a conservation easement to further protect the natural open space and ascertain partners to look for the easement, specifically the land trust that we'll be using. Then in October and December of last year in 2019, the council directed the staff to conduct additional outreach related to the conservation easement to include mineral rights. That's now been completed. In February 18th, 2020 this year and September 1st, 2020, we updated the council on the development of the conservation easement process, potential partnerships, and we are now conducting the town hall sessions in a last effort to capture additional public input. And then the estimated completion of the land management plan and the conservation easement draft and taking it back to council is in fourth quarter this year. We're targeting November and we're moving along steadily to that date. Again, just kind of in the earlier process, how did we get here with the lost dog property and deciding to conserve it? It was acquired with open space dollars from the stormwater fees. We determined restrictions on the use based on the funds, which are natural open space and passive recreation and the council directed staff to pursue the conservation easement process as of February of this year. This is the Lost Dog Trail Ordinance on May 14th, 2019 that was passed. We're just drawing your attention here. I know that a lot of people have asked staff or asked my office or asked me in other forums about preserving the land. The land is currently protected by this ordinance. By putting it in a conservation easement, we're further protecting the land by turning over its management and monitoring to a land trust. But as of right now, the land is frozen where we have preserved it in its natural state for all time and that's all 1,100 acres roughly. And there cannot be any development or major public roadways. So again, I've had that question. We need to hurry up with the conservation easement because there could potentially be development. As of May of last year, there actually cannot be development because we've had this ordinance passed. We are just now working with the land trust to make sure that we have the monitoring. We're capturing some of the species that are out there and we're developing a land management plan to make sure that there isn't any degradation of the natural state of the land. Here we have the natural open space and passive recreation definitions and just drawing a little bit of attention, we already know that there is some activity on the land already. And so passive recreational uses can include, but not always have to be permissible, I guess is how I would put it in the conservation easement, but mountain biking, recreational biking, hiking, jogging, walking, nature study, photography. The key here is that we do not want to adversely affect the environmental characteristics of the district and that's really the importance of the conservation easement. That's really the importance of what the land trust will be doing, some of their monitoring. They'll be letting us know if any thresholds are met or if there's any concerns there once they start managing the land. Here again in passive recreation, talk a little bit about activities that could include the same types of activities you saw in the natural open space, but one of the other things that we wanted to capture here for public input, and we'll talk about this a little bit more in an upcoming slide, but this may include minor facilities. They can be outside or ancillary to the land on the boundary or outside of the land just on the border, but it can be interpretive signage. I mean, you already have that, welcome to Lost Dog Trail, et cetera. You could have a kiosk for educational purpose, you could have a picnic table, you could have a restroom or a shade. And again, these are ideas where it is allowable in the definition, but it doesn't mean that it's going to happen or that we're going to put it into the conservation easement. I'm just drawing your attention to kind of the parameters here and this is what we're going to discuss. My slide is frozen. There we go, yes. So the discussion item number one today is the trails. There is a certain amount of trails out on the property now. I'm sure you're aware if you're using the trails. What we want to ask is, do we want the amount of trails to be frozen in time in perpetuity, which really means forever with the land trust? Or in the future, could you imagine the addition of new trails? And that doesn't mean trails all over, that doesn't mean nonsensible trails. Really what we're trying to maybe get captured on paper is, yes, we would contemplate new trails if there was a plan drawn up, if the frontera, the land trust sat down, if the city sat down, if it made perfect sense and it didn't impede any of the conservation values. Just again, I'm using a word that you might not be familiar with, so conservation values are things like the scenic view. So we don't want to obstruct the view or take away from anything. Other things that conservation values cover are natural habitat, whether that's some sort of mammal or it's some type of plant species. So that is kind of our Maslow's triangle, that is the pinnacle of what we're trying to achieve here is make sure that the land is in really great condition and we're always protecting the conservation values and then the other activities that we have on the land would flow down from that. Okay, so and this is just a map and I apologize, but some of you might know the maps a little bit better, but this is just kind of a, an overview of different trails that are on the property now. And so once again, the land trust will be capturing the existing trails frozen in time. Those will go in the land management plan. If we decide to kind of freeze frame all the trails, then maybe those will be all the trails that are ever included. If it makes sense to connect a trail to a certain entry point or to make a shortcut to make a long loop shorter, whatever the case may be, just throwing out some examples here, then we can capture those as well. Or we could talk about another area where we have on our wish list to have more trails. Doesn't have to be that way. That's part of the conversation that we're going to have tonight. Discussion item two, and we're almost done here. So these are passive accessory appurtenances. And so what we're saying is if something was placed on the exterior of the land or abutting the border of the property. So you're not going to be hiking and having the best view ever and then in the middle of nowhere, you're going to see a restroom that obstructs your view. That's not at all what we're going to go for. What we're thinking is, hey, when you get out of your car and you have your water bottle and you have your backpack and maybe you have kiddos and you have different gear, would you like a picnic table to set it on for five minutes and get yourself together? Would you like a shade structure? Would you like some strategically placed benches that, you know, are not really brutalist? They could fit in with the landscape and the environment very well. So those are some things that we're thinking about. Again, passive recreation allows as much as some small restrooms and some small picnic areas. We're really thinking about placing those on the exterior of the land so we're not, again, thinking about placing these in the middle of the land and impeding any views or anything pleasant about the land. It's just really for convenience. So that's our second talking point. Here we just have a couple visual examples. These are examples, they're just kind of touchstones of what something might look like. It's not exactly what we're considering or not considering, but this is just some examples that I actually got from our land trust of like, here's the Tucson Botanical Garden, here's the museum in Tucson, and here's kind of a natural look that they have incorporated. So again, just kind of an idea that we're not going to, you know, build the McDonald's Playland in the middle of the trail or anything that wouldn't fit in. And the last slide here, these are typical trail, trailhead amenities that are already existing in our parks here in El Paso. So you can see that we have some small picnic benches, we have a little bike filling station, we have a place to charge up your cell phone, we have some signage, that type of thing. So again, we're going for minimalist, we're not going for making the outdoors indoors. The last slide I think that I want to really go through is, people have asked me, what is remaining on the conservation easement timeline? So we are in the final drafting of the actual legal document to have the easement made with the land trust. We're getting together the baseline report and the land management plan. Then the city attorney, the land trust council will be going back and forth with input and revisions to make this a great document that works for you guys. And then both the Lost Dog Conservation Easement and actually the NAP land we're doing at the same time and we will take those to council. We're targeted for November. And then once they both go to council and it's passed, then they will be completely with the land trust in perpetuity. And that's, that's it for the slide, the slides that I have tonight, so I can stop sharing or if you want me to pull up a certain slide, I'll leave it up and I can do that too, but I'd like to open the floor for conversation.
Lisa, this is Tammy. If you look at the meeting chat information, you're going to see that Dr. Bonard had a question. I'm going to start at the very first one on the top. Her first, her question was, have surface waivers been fully executed?
Um, no, they have not. They have to go to council, but we do have them mostly drafted and ready to go.
And then Lisa, her second question is, what is the city's definition of natural state? How is it different from NOS and where does it say, welcome to the Lost Dog Trail sign?
So the city's definition of natural state, I don't believe that we necessarily have one. That was in the ordinance language. Maybe there's someone who could answer that better than, than me, but in the municipal code of definitions, we don't have natural state. Where does it say, welcome to the Lost Dog Trail? I believe that's at the trailhead and it's technically on PSB land where the trailhead is, but it does give you a map so that people have a wayfinding way in and out.
Okay, then I'm going to go down to the next question on the chat and then we're going to open it up to questions from the list of participants. Ms. Judy, one of our guests was asking, does the trailhead have an Iron Ranger or other information about trails that connect to the Franklin Mountain State Park? If not, will you add an Iron Ranger and coordinate with Franklin Mountain State Park?
I'm not sure I know exactly the terminology, Iron Ranger. Does that mean signage like welcome to Franklin State Park?
It's a, it's a, it's a little box where they go, you can go to pay to go and enter, to go and enter the state park.
I see.
Yeah.
I am not exactly 100% sure. I do know that we are coordinating with Franklin State Park. Okay, someone else answered for me on city staff, there is no Iron Ranger now, but I do know that we are coordinating with Franklin State Park and working with some of their volunteers and we hope to make them very involved with some of the monitoring and some of the land trust activities. Also, we know that a lot of people use the Lost Dog area to have access to Franklin State Park and vice versa, so we see that as an opportunity.
Okay, great, thank you. And now I'm going to go down the list of participants. If you want to share something with us or you have a question, this is your opportunity. If you don't, that's okay and we'll move on to the next person. So I'll start with Dr. Bonard. I'm going to go ahead and unmute you.
Okay. You've answered the question about the, the city not having a working definition for natural state. Has, have they, are you planning on getting one? Because natural state is something that I've seen in a number of documents that the city has produced. So, and this seems to be a sticking point at this time.
It's in the 10% money.
It's in the 10% money, stormwater money. And natural, and natural state is not the same thing as the zoning code, natural open space. They're two different things. So maybe that's something that Representative Schwartzbahn would be able to answer.
See some stuff, I'm muted.
I'm not exactly sure why, why you'd want me necessary to respond to that. I'm kind of curious to hear your input on some of the, the questions being raised, Dr. Bonard, at this point.
Well, Representative Schwartzbahn, you have, as many people in staff and the city have continued to use NOS, which is a zoning code for the term that misrep, actually it's a misrepresentation of the term, natural state. How can you enforce an ordinance if, if there's no definition for natural state? And natural state is something the city has used in the past. So unless the city is planning on changing the zoning for the Lost Dog Trail area, I think we need to come up, or we, meaning the people of El Paso and all of city, need to come up with a working definition for natural state. Makes sense?
Sounds great.
Okay, let's do that.
I appreciate that, we'll take your comments.
Yep, let's do that.
Okay. The next individual on the list is Adriana Montoya. Do you have a question or a comment?
Yes, I have a, I have a comment about like what structures you guys are going to put on the land. I saw the ideas that you had from the Tucson Botanical Garden and I think those are great, but for a botanical garden, Lost Dog is not a garden and I think that adding shade structures where people, like the point of going to a trail like this is that you're going to be walking and not staying in one area for a long period of time, I guess. So I do think that, you know, having something like a map is good at the beginning of the trail or having a shade structure is good at the beginning of the trail, but having things that would go in a garden is not a good idea for a trail in open space.
Sure. Once, once again, two things. We're really talking about having as a possibility, some of these benches or shade structures outside of the natural open land, so abutting it on PSB land where the trailhead sign is, et cetera. Also, again, the Botanical Art Garden was an example, saying like you can make something that looks very natural. It doesn't have to look like a playground, it can be made of natural stone or wood or whatever. So again, it's just, it's just an example, it's just a touch point and they don't have to be there at all. We can easily take them in or out. I'm there to make the convenience of the people that use the property. And again, you know, we're kind of trying to figure out like, would this be something that would be good by the parking lot? So again, you're getting out a parking lot, you have all your gear with you, do you want a surface to sit down for five minutes and tie your shoes, that type of thing? But they can go in, they could go out. This is what we're here to gather the information as we write the final easements directives.
Adriana, do you have another question or comment?
Um, just to kind of like follow up on that, I do think that because Lost Dog already has like a structure that has a map of a trail, of the trail at the beginning of the trail, I think that if anything, maybe that would need to be updated or upkept, but I don't think necessary to have, you know, something, something extra, I guess, something like charging for, it would probably not be necessary because you need to add that infrastructure and, you know, in doing so, you're automatically going against that whole natural idea. But if there are going to be benches, I think it would be a good idea to commission local artists, you know, to make some of those rest, thoughts about, and again, only at the beginning of the trail or very, used very, very sparingly throughout.
Thank you so much, we appreciate your comments. Next on the list is the Borderland Mountain Bike Association. If you have a question or a comment, we'd love to hear it.
Hi, I'm Mark Wancho. I was playing with teams earlier and I signed in under the BNBA account. I'm a board member of BNBA. I, I'm mainly here just to listen and, and observe this meeting. One thing I personally think would be nice, we have it at the other trailheads, is water fountain. We're right next to, Lost Dog Trailhead is right next to a water tank and there's no access to water. Other than that, we are looking at updating the trailhead sign. The maps do need updating. There has been some activities, some trail activity out there, so we need to look at considering mapping some of the new trails that are coming up and, and mapping better some of the other existing trails. Another thing we're considering would be nice is trail signage at junctions stating, you know, distance between this junction and next. Other than that, that's mostly what we've discussed regarding Lost Dog lately.
Thank you so much. Next on the list, I see the initials MC, Mark Calamia, did I pronounce that right?
Yes. I was wondering about, assuming the easement is passed, would the directives and/or stipulations include aspects for long-term management? And would that be done by the city or who would be responsible? Say, to prevent gradual encroachment of, say, some of the border surrounding urban structures, urban creep, if you will, adjusting or regulating the proliferation of signs so you don't have signs later on in the future sprouting up all over the place long after we're gone? Or proliferation of more trails, you've alluded to that or someone did already, all part of management. This is assuming, again, of course, it is passed, but what, who would be the responsible party on that? And as part of that, would a plan be developed for the long-term protection of this large area, this TERS 12, to ensure that it maintains its natural state according to the code?
Sure, thank you. So just to kind of answer all your questions and I'll kind of say this. So we have the ordinance, which actually protects the land as of right now from future development, so that's great. The conservation easement, really, who maintains that is a, is a local land trust. They are responsible for some of the monitoring along with their volunteers, enforcing the things that you mentioned. They are responsible for some of the monitoring along with their volunteers, enforcing the things that you mentioned, creep and stuff like that. But the land itself in perpetuity, so forever in theory, is completely protected from development. The land trust then has the ability to enforce the easement. If the land is being degraded in any way, if there's some sort of activity on the land that doesn't comport with the uses we give, then, you know, we have that ability to enforce. One other thing I'd like to say is, right when we do the conservation easement along with the legal documents, we develop two auxiliary documents, if you will, or complementary documents, however you want to look at it. One is the baseline report, which says all the different habitat and what exists on the land already. And the other is the land management plan. So the land management plan, again, talks about the trails that exist now, the natural features that exist now. So we always have a reference point to know about what is happening on the land now. And if we go do the land management plan, when we're doing the conservation easement, we see that there's already something that we don't like, like maybe there's been some illegal trails dug, or there's been some degradation in the area, we capture that there as something that we want to put on our to-do list to address from the get-go. So we're not just always taking the land in its natural state and just, you know, ignoring past issues.
Thank you, sir. The next individual is Gilbert Moreno. Sir, do you have a comment or question? I'll go ahead and unmute you. Mr. Moreno?
Okay.
Yes.
There you are.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, I have always envisioned a beginner-type trail, which I have seen in other trail systems, that is very effective, complete with signage for directed at beginner, beginner mountain bikers and children. I have scouted an area that, right at the base of the trailhead system, and it seems very feasible. The signage would include the training signage, for instance, how to climb, how to descend. I was very impressed with a trail in Frida, Colorado, I mean, yes, Colorado, that was specifically designed for children and beginner cyclists. I'm also very open to the idea of having benches along the trail, not necessarily designed by anybody, just super benches, so that older folks and children can take a break. If possible, maybe with water station on each one of those, that's just an idea. But I'm open and I'm hopeful for both the beginner trail, which I, like I said, I can help build the design of it and the signage, and also the benches all along the trails, not necessarily very far apart either. Some people are not fit enough to walk three, four miles at a time, two is one mile at a time. And also, of course, somebody from the Borderland Mountain Bike Association mentioned signage at each trail junction, pointing to where each trail goes and how far it is to the next junction. So that's pretty much my input.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Pointful made. Next, we have Nisa Harden. Ms. Nisa Harden, if you have a comment or a question, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi there. How are you? Thank you for having tonight's meeting. Appreciate it. Couple of things, I'd like to piggyback on what Sharon had stated and also seek a clarification on what is, the city is defining as a natural state. And with that being said, I would like for the trail system, in my interests and others, to stay as natural as possible with the least amount of infrastructure. And that would include, you know, no additional trails, leave it as it is. I think that we're talking about benches is kind of, I feel like it's almost like a comment that y'all are, or a focus that the city is trying to get us to digress from the real issue. And that is, where are we in this easement? Why hasn't been done yet? And give us that definition of what is a natural area. And then Sharon had her hand raised, so I'd like to defer some of my time back to Sharon so she can ask her question.
Thank you, Ms. Harden.
Having tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Harden. We will give Ms. Bonard a few more minutes. I'm just going down the list because she has spoken, but by no means are we trying to ignore her, so we'll definitely get back to her. We appreciate you deferring your time to her, but we will definitely give her an opportunity to speak. I'm just going down the list out of fairness to those folks in the session. And we appreciate your comments on natural state. It's something that obviously you have concerns about and we need to address. I don't have an answer for you tonight, but somebody definitely will look into it. Next on the list, we have a gentleman by the first name of Joe.
Yeah, this is Joe, Joe Garabee. So my comments are, I do want natural space. I believe that's what we voted for when we had the whole process. And so I am, I do not like new trails. Matter of fact, I am kind of annoyed that new trails have been cut, you know, in the interim between when we voted and now. And, you know, now there's talk about actually sort of officializing those trails by putting them on a map. It was supposed to be as it is, and as it is are the trails that existed, the way they exist. I am not too opposed to signage at junctions, just so people know where they're going, but that would be like the absolute most I would be able to support in terms of, you know, new stuff out on the trail. More to my liking would be leave it as it is or as it was when it was voted on on May 4.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments. Next, we have a lady by the name of Judy. Ms. Judy, if you are online, if you could go ahead and share your comments or questions with us.
Yes, thank you very much for this opportunity, and thank you to the staff, elected people and city staff for moving forward with a conservation easement, the only way to permanently protect this land. Thank you to all the attendees for participating in this process. Thank you to all the voters who voted to protect this land. I'd just like to point out, this is a huge conservation victory that has been done by the people of El Paso. And I think it's fantastic. Just want to say thank you. I appreciate the process of having everybody participate in a town hall so that it's not just, you only get your three minutes if we can fit you in. The whole process, thank you. It's a huge success. And just since we're talking so much about benches, I'd appreciate, you know, I'm getting pretty old now. We don't need a fancy, pretty bench for the artwork. We just need a rock that I can put my butt on for a few minutes while I tie my shoes. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Judy. And if I can go back, if you'll indulge me just for a second. I know that Ms. Harden had asked about where we are in the process. That was covered in the beginning of the presentation. As Mayor Proten Schwartzbahn mentioned, in February, council voted unanimously to support the development of a conservation easement, and we are in the development stage. It should be completed by the end of this year, so I think Lisa mentioned sometime in November, we should see some kind of draft go back to council. Let me go back up. We have Mr. Robert Romero next. Mr. Romero, if you have a question or comment, feel free to unmute yourself.
No questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next on the list, Mr. Scott White. If you're still on the line, sir, if you have a question or comment, this is your opportunity.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. This technology is always fun. You're never sure if people can hear you or not. So I want to thank you for having these meetings, this opportunity for public input. One of the things I think is very important as we go forward is if we are going to look at the possibility of any new trail, I think the only one that we should be considering that's a new trail is one that might possibly be ADA accessible because there are a lot of people out there who enjoy the trails now, but as they get older, they're not going to be able to enjoy these. And there is, if I'm not mistaken, a gravel road that's been created to access the water tank that's higher up on the property. That would be the only thing I could see improving to create a new trail so that people could use this that, who might not otherwise be able to access the land, or possibly additional trails if it's determined that new trailheads are needed to connect to the existing trails. But I do not believe we should be creating new trails where we have a system already. And we need to be looking at making sure that people can and do have access to the land and that is preserved as new development goes up around the land so that we're not closing it off to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Up next is Ms. Veronica Carvajal. Ms. Veronica Carvajal, if you have a question or comment, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, everyone. I think, I mean, I want to thank everyone who worked really hard to get this ordinance passed. My only caution would be to provide definitions that are pretty specific to all of the key terms so that if down the road there's a need to enforce, that it can be done so fairly easily without having to resort to litigation. So that would just be my comment to, the community should have input into all the definitions that we just talked, well, y'all discussed, the need for a definition for natural space. There may be others such as even preserve. What does that mean? And so that should be, that should be also defined, so it's not an issue for litigation down the road. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, I don't have a name, but I do have a number. It starts with area code 512, and the first three digits after that are 577. I'm going to go ahead and unmute you. We have a participant on the telephone. If you have a question or comment. If you could introduce yourself as well, please.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, ma'am. If you could speak a little louder, it probably would be really great, but we can't hear you. Are you still on the line? We kind of lost you. I'm not sure if you're saying anything. If you could speak just a little bit louder so we can hear you. Okay, I believe we lost that individual. Hopefully she'll come back. Up next, there's a phone number, a local number. The number is 915-494. If you could introduce yourself and share your question or comment, if you have one. Okay. I believe she is back. Let me go ahead and add her back in. Thank you all for your patience. If you can hear me, go ahead and unmute yourself. We lost you for a minute. We are waiting for your question or comment.
Tammy?
Yes, ma'am.
My call dropped off. I'm sorry. I'm in a bad location right now. Do I have an opportunity to speak now?
Yes, ma'am, now.
That was good.
A couple of issues. I understand that the city is conducting a survey, and I'm not really sure why the city is conducting a survey, maybe to get additional information about what the public wants as far as using this property going forward, even though it was pretty clear that they wanted to preserve it in perpetuity and as natural state. And I'm just wondering, is this a survey that the city has used in prior conservation easements, number one? Number two, are they using it with the NAP property? And who would be paying for the picnic areas and structures? You know, I think Lisa and the doctor had talked about this concern about natural state and making sure that we preserve it in a natural state. Just if I can get some more information about that, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Sure, I can answer the first portion. There is no survey. We are just simply gathering additional input as we near finalize the conservation easement draft, but there is no survey. And in terms of paying for the infrastructure, I'm going to have to defer that to Ms. Lisa. I'm not, I'm not sure what the, the correct answer is on that. But if there would be any picnic tables, it would be outside of the boundaries. Ms. Lisa, if you want to add on to that? And it's, I don't know that any funding has been identified.
Sure, thank you for your question. No funding has been identified, and just going forward, we would have to work with the land trust to figure that out, whether that would be, you know, some fundraising, maybe a donation, etc. I'm speaking way ahead of myself, so I don't want to send anyone thinking in that direction, but right now, there's, there's no money for those types of projects. We're trying to get the conservation easement done, you know, as close to possible of the intent. That's the whole intent of the conservation easement. As far as NAP land, we're almost completely done with drafting. We're kind of proverbially crossing Ts and Is there. NAP land is similar in intent to conserve the land with the land trust in perpetuity, but the land is different. NAP land has a lot more natural habitat that could be damaged by usage and just the situational conservation values and intent, those surround neighborhoods, etc., are different. So we talk about these conservation easements together, but I want to let you know that what's between them, each individual.
Okay, and just one other thing. In my personal preference, and that's what this town hall is all about, I prefer that there not be any added structures. I appreciate mountain bikers and people with, you know, who are hiking trails who may need additional signage as far as which direction to go on a trail. But I think that in, within the conservation easement itself, it should be fairly limited as far as allowing additional structures or, you know, pouring concrete into the ground for four benches and shade structures as well as picnic tables. I think that, based on what I understand and what I recall of the election was, is that the citizens of El Paso were pretty clear that they wanted to keep the park as it is. is that the citizens of El Paso were pretty clear that they wanted to keep the park as it is at that time in May of 2019. So that's just my two cents. And thank you all for your hard work. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. And just to address that, we heard you loud and clear. I want to assure you that we've drafted the conservation easement as such. We also had several requests from the public for input. We know that users of many ages and abilities are using the park. And so we just want to capture some input there. We don't plan to put any infrastructure in the, in the boundaries, but adjacent to the boundaries. And we want to capture some of those ideas. And one last thing on this too. As far as the signage, we have very definite parameters, as do most conservation easements, about what the signage could do. But I just want to make you aware that as people use this trail, we have to have some amount of signage for wayfinding and for our EMS response teams. We want to be very, very cognizant of emergency response and wayfinding.
Of course, that's understandable. I mean, we don't want anyone getting lost out there or hurt as a result of no signage. But just as far as going forward, I think that the minimal amount of structures is really what the citizens of El Paso wanted in that election. So thank you.
Thank you. And then just to be, just to be clear, we don't have anything planned right now. We just kind of gather public input. And of course, there's no funding allocated to this either. So that's something that will be decided down the road should any, should something be considered down the road. But right now, we're just gathering public input. There is no plans for any kind of bench or other facility or amenity. Next, I know that the Bonards have been waiting a little while to get back to them. Back to Sharon and Rick Bonard. And then I think there are two other individuals who have joined, looming on a conference.
Are we unmuted?
Dr. Bonard, yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Yes, Dr. Bonard. That's the man kind. Hold on just a sec. Okay, can you see him? Hold on, hold on, hold on.
So, so, you know, I have several concerns, having listened to this over a period of time. And of course, one of the biggest concerns that I have is that there's lacking a definition for natural state, even though that's been used in prior city ordinances, all the way back to the funding that you're using to purchase this property. So natural state has been mentioned and is not being codified. And we need a definite definition for that. Substituting natural open space is not acceptable. Another thing that I find really glad that we're talking about is the situation of where we're going to put picnic tables and those kinds of amenities. And you keep mentioning that that will be on the outskirts, as is Lost Dog Trailhead is actually not part of this parcel, nor are the six other trailheads that are proposed for this area. This is going to start looking like a Christmas tree. If you're not careful, you're going to have trailheads, six of them, all within a mile and a half of each other, feeding into this property with picnic tables and benches and water tables. And, you know, every kind of amenity known to human man. Understand that those are all acceptable outside of the boundary because we have not voted about that. But that would be the proper place to do it. But you need to be cognizant of this is only 1,000 acres. And to have six trailheads feeding it tends to be a little bit of overkill. And finally, I would ask Representative Schwartzbein, why has Paseo del Norte not been removed from the master thoroughfare plan? You need to vacate that easement because easements will remain in place until even after a conservation easement. They remain unless you remove them. You've been very interested in a surface waiver agreement with subservice right holders. It's just as equally important that the city of El Paso vacate that easement that they have for any roads through that property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we will define natural state as part of the land management. We don't have that information for you right now, but it's something that we will address.
But it needs to be done because it's an ordinance and that's the regulating document that monitors how this land is used.
Yes, sir.
One correction. This is Lisa. We can't introduce new legal definitions in the land management plan. That actually has to be in the conservation easement. All other documents roll into the actual conservation easement. So just a little technicality there, but I want to clear that up as far as expectations.
But the law was already passed.
Yes, sir, and it will be defined. I misspoke, but it will be defined. Ms. Sharon, Dr. Bonard, did you have a separate question aside from your husbands?
My only other question is, what is this, all of this going to be used for? And who's going to pay for it? Because this process of having the town halls and, and the surveys and everything, it's expensive. And it's, you know, you haven't, as you identified, that you haven't done it for other conservation easements. This seems like an additional expense and also a thwarting of doing, going forward.
So I just want to, I just want to be clear about this. So, you know, this idea of having these, these stakeholder input meetings was, was again brought up by the public. You, Dr. Boner, actually reached out to my office on July 31st, asking, quote, "When are we stakeholders going to have a meeting on the tenants of the conservation easement for the Lost Dog Trails?" So, you know, again, this is an opportunity. We're so, so very close towards getting this done. I appreciate the work that, that you and so many others are doing. And this seems to be a pretty productive process of figuring out the final steps of this conservation easement. It is in perpetuity. So those, those uses and what, what would be or not be allowed is going to be there permanently. And so I appreciate you reaching out to our office about those questions. I appreciate everybody that's been on here to, to, you know, share their input. And I think that's really important, especially after the vote in 2019, to preserve this land.
So what are the tenants that you're referring to?
So that was what you wrote our office.
You say, "I wrote it," and I requested that, that email back recently because of your statements the other day. I don't have it in my sent file, so if you'd be kind enough to send that to me, I really would appreciate it.
We want to see the tenants.
I want to see the tenants. I want to see what you said that I said to you. And I also would like to see the tenants that you're talking about. Okay?
Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
We have someone who joined us not very long ago. The, there is a phone number. There is not a name attached to it. The number is 915-801. Those are the first three digits. If you are on the line and you can hear me, you can unmute yourself and add a question or comment. Again, that phone number starts with 915-801. Okay, I don't see any activity on behalf of that participant. But if you're able to, if you want to participate or comment, just go ahead and unmute yourself. I'm going to go back to Ms. Adriana Montoya who raised her hand. She also had a follow-up question.
Hi, so it's kind of more of a follow-up comment. In May 2019, when I was working on the initial campaign to preserve Lost Dog, I was a, I was a junior in high school. And, you know, now I'm a, I'm a, I'm a college freshman. And it, it just kind of astounds me that for this long, we haven't had a definition for what natural state is. And I feel like the conversation right now is focused a lot on convenience on the trail. So, you know, like, you know, charging ports or like benches, and that's all great. But the real questions that we should be asking is, you know, like, what is natural state? How and when are we going to get that definition? Who is going to be paying for any amenities that we're going to put on that land? And it just seems to me like any money in the extension of infrastructure on this land would be better put to, you know, expanding other open spaces in El Paso. And I am open to the idea of, you know, having an ADA trail because we do need, you know, accessibility. And I'm not advocating for alienating some Alpasans from not utilizing this land. But I do think that the conversation needs to be less oriented towards, you know, convenience and more towards, you know, who is paying for it, how we're going to get that definition, when we're going to get that definition. And, you know, when, when is this going to be done? You know, because it's been almost half of my high school career, this has been happening and going on. So, thank you.
Thank you. And that, again, it's my understanding that the definition will be included in the easement and that process should be completed before the end of this year. So that, that should be good news, that it shouldn't take, shouldn't take us into future years, that we should be completing this process, taking it to council toward the end of this year. I have, just making sure, there was a lady by the name of Kim who joined us earlier. I don't see her on the line right now. And I'm just going to try it one more time. If the individual who phoned in to this session with the phone number 915-801, those were the first digits. If you are on the line and you want to unmute yourself, this is your opportunity to share your comments or questions.
Okay, I just, I just figured out how to unmute.
Great. Could you hear me? Yes, ma'am.
Okay, my name is Sylvia Seerpas. And again, I've been involved in, in this effort, you know, to save Lost Dogs, you know, for, well, not from the very, very beginning, but, you know, pretty much the beginning. I did a lot of canvassing. And what I heard over and over again of the people who do use Lost Dogs is that they want it the way it is. They don't want all those amenities. They want it natural. That was always, that always came out very, very clear and intently too. They, they wanted me to know that. So I really think that, you know, the, the, you know, the public has spoken, you know. People want it in a natural state. And not to be, if there's no money for it, then don't do it, you know. Leave it the way it is. Let's go on with the easement. But there, but the Bonards do bring up some very, very important issues that do really need to be talked about and discussed and resolved. So I'm glad that they're able to, I'm getting this chance to, to do that. And I'm glad to be here because I'm always learning more and more about the process of, of of this easement. So thank you very much for the, for this opportunity.
Thank you. And then I wanted to go ahead and state again that we have no plans right now. There is nothing, no facility or structure planned for that area. Just want to make that very clear. There's no funding identified for any, any of that. We're working on the conservation easement, the language that would go into that. And this document would be going to council by the end of this year. So you should see a presentation to council sometime around November, maybe as late as December, but our goal is to get it to council by, before the end of this year. And I believe we've gone down the list of all participants. So unless you have anything further, I want to thank you for your time. So I just want to open it up right now. Anyone who may have an additional comment, just go down the messages. I know that there were additional comments made there. Get and save those and then consider those comments as well as part of this process. Again, there is no survey. There is no survey. We are just simply gathering last-minute public input as we are nearing the end of this conservation easement process.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say something. I really appreciate everybody for coming out. You know, one of the things that Ms. Montoya brought up was about payment for it. You know, again, this easement, when we think about it, is something that's going to last way after all of us are here, you know, and giving and having that, that necessity in thinking about it, you know. I don't think it's a question of, first of all, there's no plans from the city for putting in anything in that place. But if, you know, I think some people agreed about looking at an ADA trail or some other, you know, if there's a bench or something. You know, that kind of, that kind of thing would have to be written into the easement for it to be able to happen. And I know that we already have had in the Lost Dog area donations, you know. For example, correct me if I'm wrong, Rick, but El Paso Electric donated the solar powered picnic table that's currently at the Lost Dog Trailhead. So we just have to really be future-thinking about this, preserving what's there, making sure that that's in lockset as well. So I'm really looking forward to getting this done. We are so close towards getting this done. And it's such an important project that we will have the, the the boat, the, 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 the thing wrapped up very soon. So again, I want to thank everybody for coming out.
My last comment is I want to remind everyone that we will have our second town hall on this topic, a second town hall, a virtual one, at the same time, 6:00 PM, but on September the 30th. So if you have any additional questions or comments, you're more than welcome to join us then too. It'll, it'll be a very similar presentation as, you know, we still have some work to do before we take this to council. But we are, we are open to take more feedback from the public and you'll have that opportunity at 6:00 PM on September 30th.
Rita, the, can you read out the time for September 30th?
The time for the meeting on the 30th is 6:00 PM. And with that, thank you all for your participation. We appreciate you coming out, taking time out of your evening. It really means a lot to us. We appreciate your comments. They've been very helpful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, staff, and everybody for doing a great job too.